Agenda is roll call.
President.
Here.
President.
Dr. Schumacher will join exec session and then leave. Mr. Tatum.
Here.
And Dr. Beeson.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is executive session. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Vice President, I move the Board of Education of USD 501 to Pika Public Schools recess into executive session for sixty minutes to discuss confidential personnel matters to protect the privacy of the individuals being discussed pursuant to the personnel exemption under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The board will return to open session in the boardroom at six thirty one PM. The superintendent and leadership team are invited into executive session.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. I'm looking for a second. Mr. Menios. And the vote is open.
All votes are in and the motion carries.
All right, we will recess into executive session for one hour.
From Executive Session. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, at this time, let me turn around. Oh my, do we have any stu- Do you know how to say the Pledge of Allegiance? You want to come one up? Does she know how? Mama, you want to come with her? Come on, Mama. All right, I'm going to come all the way back here. And let's see, can you get the camera on her back here? There we go. Here you go. And what is your name?
Ophelia.
Oh, you're just beautiful, Ophelia. Okay, let's turn hand over heart. And one, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, can we give her an applause? That was the best pledge I've ever heard. Oh my, good job, Ophelia. Ophelia, what school do you go to?
Scott.
Oh, wow. Thank you, Ophelia and Mama and team. Wow, that's good stuff.
All right, next item on the agenda is item number four, Adoption of the Agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Vice President, I move the Board adopt the agenda as presented.
In a second. Ms. Bowley, seconds. Ready for a vote?
The vote is open. They're not showing. For Mrs. Bowley. For Dr. Bonebrake. For you, Mrs. Schmidt.
Everyone in favor, raise your hand. There we go.
Now it goes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is School Highlights.
This is our favorite part, or certainly my favorite part of the meeting. We have Mr. Yale Taylor. It is Native American Heritage Month. And Mr. Taylor is here to present the blanket presentation. The Title IV Parent Committee would like to continue to highlight the great work of the Native American staff here and of Mr. Taylor, who's done extraordinary things. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Taylor to take it from here.
Halito, everyone. Good evening. First, let me say thank you for giving me a chance to come up here and do this blanket presentation. Although I don't have any parent of my parent committee here tonight, they set forth this year a task to make sure that we, with our Indian education program, uplift our students, but also focus on and highlighting our staff that helps provide the best education for our children. So, we started this last year, and I hope we can continue this every year. My thought was, who can we find in this district and highlight who has put in their time and done such great work? Now, Ms. Wabunsey is our highlight tonight. And she has her crew from Hope Street and Meadows here, and maybe a few other places as well. But to give you a little background on Ms. Wabunsey, she is Kickapoo in Prairie Band. She has been in education for 24 years, 19 here at Topeka Public Schools. Ms. Wabunsey has worked at Avondale East, Stout, Meadows, and now at Hope Street as her counselor. She has worked in Indian education in our summer school program in previous years, and she was an assistant coach over at T West. It is definitely my honor to award her this blanket tonight. But before she does receive her blanket, I do want her current principal, Ms. Johnson, to come up and also say some great words about her too.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Ms. Wabunsey loves being the center of attention. This is so exciting for her, but it is well deserved. And I am very grateful that you would be willing to take the time to honor her. Ms. Wabunsey does a couple of really important things in our school district that go unnoticed. She honors her heritage. And why that matters is that our students do not recognize how important where they come from is. So by her standing up and saying, "Where I come from matters. It's the model." It is the tone that we want our children to feel valued and know that their heritage matters. And unfortunately, the Native American indigenous people and what my friend prefers to be referred to as an American Indian are overlooked and not heard. So, we take the time in our schools to stop and honor that heritage. Mr. Yale Taylor has done an amazing job of bringing this about. We had the wonderful opportunity to be with the indigenous youth this last week, and what happens for the staff is that we learn things we didn't know, and it changes the ignorance that we carry. Not through anyone's fault, just lack of understanding. And Ms. Wabunsey stands up and says, "That's not right." And she corrects us. So, little sayings that we've all said, and I raised my hand. Hey, let's have a quick powwow. That diminishes a culture of people and the importance of what that ceremony is to them when we reduce it down to something so trivial. We shouldn't do that. But I wouldn't have known that unless I had spent time with someone who was willing and strong enough to say to me, "You really shouldn't say that." Do you know what that means? And corrected me. And then, not only was she willing to do that with myself, but any staff member who had an open heart and wanted to learn. And so, what a gift Ms. Wabunsey has brought to our schools, because without people willing to stand up and say, "That's just not the way it's supposed to be," we would continue those things. So I am incredibly proud of working with Ms. Wabunsey for 15 years and doing things to her like this. The first day I met her, we were new to Meadows, both of us the same year, starting at Meadows, and she walked in the door and I said, "Hey, the Topeka Capital Journal's coming to do an interview. I'd like you to take that lead." She was furious at me, so I've been getting paid back for doing that to her for years. But she goes unnoticed, and I do not want that to continue. So, thank you for today and allowing us to say, "Good work and keep it up," because we need people like Ajahn Wabunsey to share who she is and where she comes from and show it with pride. So, thank you.
Oh, yep, yep. Well, I just left because as everybody was saying that, you're at the very end, said my name. Sorry. I'm Ajahn Wabunsey, and I have my, one of my sisters here tonight with me. I have one of my nieces and my great niece who you, who said the pledge tonight, and former coworkers and friends that are here with tonight, and they surprised me. I wasn't expecting them to be here, so. Yeah, I don't know what else to say. No, no, we're, we're good.
All right, does anybody on the Board have some questions? Mr. Minios?
When I was there at TCalc last week, and I learned some words, and it was pretty interesting. I wonder if you might share your experience with what you think, or maybe what students have told you about the impact you've had on students, you know, just being someone with your background. And I was just surprised by how many Native American students we have in our district, and there was a number of individuals there, just seeing them in one place was impactful for me. But I wondered, what have you seen in terms of impact?
I think just recognizing and talking to the students and asking them from what different tribes there are, because there's so many tribes that are represented throughout our district. So I just, you know, I ask them where they're from and who their family is, because that's how, I don't know, that's how, what I ask, you know, when they ask if I'm you know, Indian or anything, and I generally just start off with, you know, what tribe I am and who my family is, and just get to know them and ask them those, those questions.
Anyone else? Dr. Beeson?
Thank you for all you do in the district. I'm curious with your 24 years in education, shifts maybe that you've seen in terms of acknowledging our student heritage, and also what gaps still exist that we should be thinking about filling?
I guess just, I think I became more aware of how many people throughout the district didn't realize how many Indian students they had. And it came about, what, like 10 years ago when we did Courageous Conversations? And just looking, when they were presenting the data, and looking at that, and they'd have, you know, African-American, Hispanic, white. And when they would look at the American Indian, Native American thing, it was usually a lot of times on the dropout, or they recognized the alcoholism and stuff like that, and I'm like, we're the only group that I felt that was looking at the negative part of it. And so, I guess that's how I, I've seen it, and just making students aware and knowing. And as Ms. Johnson said, is when people say little sayings, you have to, you have to say something about it. And I mean, it was in one of the Courageous Conversations that somebody made it. And I've been in, or another meeting, another staff member had made a thing, and I'm just like, I just shake my head and I just approached them, because if you don't educate them, then it's going to continue. And so.
That also takes a lot of strength on your part.
And not strength, it's just, just letting people aware that you don't know who your audience is. And so, I heard you guys them chuckle when they talked about the powwow, because I would, you know, I'd just say, "Hey, you can't say that," and they're like, "Oh." And then, it was, it was done, they just recognized it, and and I think they even, you know, will tell people, "Hey, you can't say that," so.
If there's anything specific that the Board can support, please keep us posted on that. I think we would all be very interested, so, thank you.
Ms. Bowley?
I've known you a long time. Your work in our district has been pretty fabulous, I'm going to follow your route. But I just want to, you help students every day, and you help students not only in the tribes, but also all the other students know their importance. And I want to thank you for that. But I'm just so happy you're being honored, because you're not one to, like, shine. You keep your glow down till you get upset. Then you can glow pretty red hot. But you keep your glow down, because you just have that giving heart. And I'm just so happy to see you get the blanket this year. I'm glad you got that honor.
Thank you.
So, thanks for everything you're doing, and please, anytime you're able to assist us as a Board, our district, please let us know, because we have a lot of students that need to find what their worth is and shine with that. And I know both of you are really working hard on that, and we need to continue to do that. So, thanks.
Of course, yes, yes. All right, so just, I will try to keep it short, though. We have this year currently 306 kids who have opted into Title VI. I know in demographics, when they enroll, there's actually a lot higher number. We're in the high 700s that identify as Native American, but opting in, 306. We've really done a great job this year, I think, of making sure we are hitting the major changes within Indian education within the state. KSDE has ruled out new documents in our history, government social studies standards that incorporate Native Kansas history. There is also another guiding document on the nations that are presently here, Osage, and then Osage and Akall, and those that have been removed as well. Within our district, our curriculum teams have been working together to make sure that that's implanted there. On our Title VI front, we have, we have been really hard at work making sure our schools share in the culture. We've had Dennis Rogers in a few of our elementary schools over the last few weeks. Artist Bobby Von Martin was at Topeka High. And then we had our major youth gathering last Thursday. Now, the youth gathering is part of that community outreach. Our four high schools sent their kids, two middle, two of our middle schools sent their kids, but we also invite Lawrence Public Schools, Horton, Holton, Royal Valley, Manhattan joined us this year in an effort to de-silo the Title VI programs. Oftentimes, we are left alone, and the guidance on what we should be doing is not met appropriately. So this is that way for us to communicate and build better programs. It also reflects well with our tribal consultation that we are required to do with Prairie Band Potawatomi and Citizen Potawatomi, who has an office here in town. We're just trying to have our kids see community. 90% of Native students are in the public school system, and so they are removed from their nations. And so any chance that we can bring everybody together and share some of those things that they might not get, it, to me, that's the success. And then the last thing I will bring up, because it is a responsibility of my grant, we do have an open Title VI parent meeting December 1st from 5:30 to 6:30 at TCalc. Parents that are enrolled or have their students enrolled, they're more than welcome to come and give their input for where we go next year. But following that, we have teamed up with Prairie Band, Prairie Band's Education Department, and they're going to, for our juniors and seniors, do a FAFSA 101 night following our parent meeting. So, a lot of things are in play, and we are mending and building relationships as we go. So, thank you for your time. Oh, so, yes, thank you. We also have an event Saturday, a lot of stuff going on. Saturday, Prairie Band was kind enough to donate us, and it's on the Board minutes tonight, a nice, a little pot of money to put on Soul Stories. Our students are going to listen to some inspirational leaders from Indian country. We have Dr. Peterson coming from KU. I think there is a gentleman from a TV show called Res Ball that's coming in to talk to the kids, and then our kids are going to tell their own stories on some Air Force Ones. So, there will be some art incorporated into that, and that's this Saturday. This was, it's kind of a split funding, so we do have Title VI kids there, we will have Robinson Middle School kids there, and then we opened up Royal Valley to bring 10 kids of their own, too, because we're all family, so we would love to have a few of them here, too, as well. So, yeah, thank you for reminding me about that. But yeah, any questions from the Board?
Anyone have any questions?
We do ask that you stay around for just a moment, because we will be also taking photos momentarily. So, that is our proclamation for our Native American Heritage Month, as we proclaim this month is one in which to acknowledge and celebrate. This is also the month for National School Psychology, I'm sorry, Week. And Dr. Sheets and Mr. Lowers are here to share a little bit about how many school psychologists we have and to share a few highlights and answer questions. We ask Dr. Sheets and Mr. Lowers to please come forward. And for all of our psychologists, Topeka Public Schools District recognizes TPS psychologists for the outstanding service to students. Thank you, Dr. Sheets.
Good evening, thanks so much for having us today. Yes, we are recognizing our excellent school psychology department. We currently have 21 school psychologists that serve our students, and they do a wide range of services for our kids as far as academics, emotional, social, and a full continuum of mental health services. We have a couple, two of our school psychologists are part-time, and if you think about it, we have currently over 3,200 students on individual education plans. So, also, the school psychologists do an important part of child find. And that's where we're always watching the academic progress of our students and helping our school teams in the process of general education intervention plans, where we work with the students and the parents, and we measure the progress of the kids, and at times, we determine whether or not we should evaluate the students and provide special services for them. So, it is an honor to work with these folks in the department. And Dr. Carrie Sheets is here. She is a leader of the group and does an outstanding job. I've really enjoyed getting to know her, and I'll let her say a few words as well.
And Dr. Sheets, could you share how long you've been in the district? And then we'll open this up to questions for you regarding your school psychologist.
Sure, so I actually did my practicum here, and I've been here ever since. This is my 18th year. Had a couple of different roles, but connected with School Psychology Department my whole time. We have a great group of school psychologists. There's actually a nationwide shortage of school psychologists, and we have been battling with vacancies. So, my people are very hardworking and have taken on extra roles. We'd love to continue to increase the number that we have to be closer to what our national association rate would like us to be. So they do a lot of hard work in just limited hours of the week. And really, I like to think of school psychology as this blend of special education. They're kind of the experts in the law, regulations, evaluations, and then also the mental health piece, doing counseling, working with crisis, behavior modification, all of those things as well.
Thank you so much. Does anybody have questions for Dr. Sheets? Ms. Bowley?
So, how many vacancies do we have? How many are new to us in the last, like, couple of years? And what's our competition outside of education wage-wise?
So, I really have 15 school psychologists that are working full-time with me. Two of them are contractors. This is my first year of having to go contractor out. I still have one vacancy. The last year, we had three vacancies, and that is really brutal for my staff. So we did do contract. Most contractors are virtual. And if you can imagine giving IQ tests and achievement tests virtually, that's not something that I really want to go there if we don't have to. So I was lucky enough to find two contractors that would work hybrid, so they can be in person and do their testing, and then do paperwork at home. So that is one thing that we compete with. I have had some retired school psychologists that are willing to work for us one or two days a week. They come in, do some testing, and then hand over the protocols to the school psychs to staff it. So that just is a way to help alleviate a little bit of some of the testing and observation requirements for them and make it a little bit more manageable. Because school psychologist is kind of a unique field, and licensed through KSDE, most work within the school systems. My biggest competition is other districts. Other districts can promise a school psych one building, and most of mine have two buildings. So, that's my biggest competition.
Mr. Minios?
You know, I'd like to focus on impact, and maybe if you could speak to the impact of school psychologists in our district and in our schools?
Yeah, so I feel like they're kind of behind-the-scenes players. They're really involved with kind of creating plans, either through general ed interventions or IEPs, to help students be successful by doing the testing, to figure out what the strengths and needs are of the students in order to build a plan to help them be successful. Observing and doing assessments to figure out functions of behavior to help students be successful behaviorally in the classroom, so that they can then gain the academic knowledge.
All right, anyone else? Ms. Bowley?
Would you thank those retired ones coming in and helping our district? And let them know how much we appreciate that time and effort on their free time, basically? Yeah, so please thank them for us.
I will, thank you.
Thank you so much. Obviously, you guys are a vital part of what we do here at Topeka Public Schools. I'm curious, what made, what drew you to psychology? And then what kept you at Topeka Public Schools?
So I did not know what a school psychologist was, growing up. I'm like, there had I'm like, there had to have been one in my schools. I never knew one. I kind of picked it from a book, because it talked about counseling was kind of interesting, and then school psychology adds the data piece in it, which was really interesting. So I went through grad school not really knowing exactly what this looks like, and I remember stepping into my practicum, being like, I really hope I like this after all the time and money I spent. So I kind of just fell into it, and I absolutely love it. I think, like, I like the data piece, I like the problem-solving pieces, working with the families, the staff, the community, just kind of a very unique field. Again, that special education plus mental health side, just, that's really where my passion is.
All right, well, please thank your entire team for their passion and all that they pour into our students. We appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
All right, I think we'll take a few minutes to take a few photos.
Yes, ma'am.
All right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, on three, one, two, three.
All right, on three, one, two, three.
One more, yes, I got it. Thank you.
All right, on three, one, two, three.
All right, next item on the agenda is item six, public comments. I do not believe we have anyone signed up, is that correct? All right, so next is item seven, disposition of business by consent. I'm looking for a motion. Mr. Tatum?
Madam Vice President, I move the board approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project and purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Thank you. And a second, Dr. Beeson? And we're ready for a vote.
The vote is open. All votes are in, and the motion carries.
All right, next item is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. At this time, we'll be reporting out on school improvement mentorships. We have two of our schools on improvement that have just made tremendous strides in so many ways, from culture to graduation rate. Both Highland Park High, they're both from the east side, and, and Dr. Gardner, who's representing two schools, Eisenhower and Ross. At this time, Dr. Gardner will come up, and he'll be talking about mentorship and partnerships. While they also talk about that, when he's done with that piece, we do have another school who has partnerships and some community relationships that they've done, that we learned about a data consult. So they are also a school that has been on improvement at Williams, and so I believe she's joining online, because as we learned about that with data consult, we shared that she'd be reporting out as well. I do want to mention Ms. Schmidt, you mentioned Pastor Sublet. He can't come this time, but he'll be coming in January, as he is, he is also partnering in a, in a different way, in terms of a community partner. So we'll still be talking about partnerships going into January. With that very large context, Dr. Gardner represents the two schools. He is also the president of the Minority Leadership Academy. He'll share with you what that is. And as we begin to present, members of those various teams, schools, and Minority Leadership Academy are also here. I believe Ms. Watson will be coming forward as well to speak to a slide that she has, and one or two of our business partners may well be in the audience to talk about the partnerships that they've done with these individuals. With that, we'll turn it over to Dr. Gardner, and we'll pull up the PowerPoint.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, and Board of Education, for allowing myself and my fellow principal colleagues to come speak on Mr. Robbins' impact as a mentor and community partnerships that we've established. The first community partnership we're going to discuss is Advisors Excel. And what's special about this partnership is just the longevity of this partnership. They have facilitated a partnership between the Topeka Public Schools and AE representatives. We have quarterly meetings with Advisors Excel, and one thing last year that we started was return on investment. So when we spend their dollars, how are we becoming accountable to metrics and the different outcomes? And then Mr. Robbins has continued to add support and expand funds for schools. And I'm the principal at Eisner, and that's a new partner for Advisors Excel. And so we have that pipeline, which we'll discuss later in the slides.
And if there's a partner here, then, oh, there is a partner here, and I see Mr. Robbins back there. At the very end, we want to acknowledge these partners, who are giving their time and resources in some pretty powerful ways.
So Advisors Excel's and Topeka Public Schools' impact strategy. As I previously stated, AE and TPS now have an educational pipeline, which is really exciting. And, and most importantly, it facilitates schools. I know Dr. Kip shared the school needs index, really those schools who needed those extra supports, and it starts with Sheldon and Pine Ridge, then Ross, Eisenhower, and then Highland Park. But also, we have College Prep and Avondale Academy as part of that educational pipeline. And the exciting part, as we move forward, is we're going to start in the future to be able to track students as they go through Sheldon, Pine Ridge, Ross, Eisenhower, and Highland Park High School. These are the different categories of support that, as principals and leaders of our schools, we facilitate the different dollars to be spent in. And the first category is student and family support, student learning, staff support, family engagement, and college and career readiness. And I'm sure all of our principal colleagues could speak to how these have made a tremendous impact on our schools. And when you think of student and family support, I'll give you an example this weekend, this past weekend, Ross and Eisenhower had Girls on the Run, which is funded through Advisors Excel, and
Tracy's.
Tracy's here, she's been in the race, she's mentored. And what was neat about this year is the family support. In the past, we don't get a lot of families that actually travel to Manhattan, and I checked today, only one family out of 15 girls at Eisenhower and 12, no, 15 at Ross and 12 at Eisenhower. Only one family didn't actually make the trip up to Manhattan. So that speaks to, I think, the family engagement on a larger scale. And then, okay, I just wanted to speak to college and career readiness, as this is important with college visits, note the high school, the dual-credit and AP courses, which we'll discuss, mentorship and guidance, internships, and then that workplace exposure. Asking why? So this is the kind of the return on investment that we started this past school year, going into this school year. So every line item has a metric and objective, and just two examples are reduced learning loss in kindergarten readiness, so that's the objective. The metric we're looking at is completion rates, pre-, post-summer assessments, parent feedback, fall academic performance, and then the outcome would be minimalized learning gaps, strengthened skill development, increased parent engagement, and improved academic readiness. And then another example is storytime through volunteerism. So while some things are easier to find metrics, there's still some power just in volunteering, which Advisors Excel, those that have our partners know, that's one of the main components of their organization is volunteerism. And with storytime, it's pretty unique, as they come and read to, I know, the preschool and then our kindergarten classes at Ross, and just try to inspire that love of reading. And all those students then get to take a book home. And so how that's measured is just, we can look at the number of events, student surveys, and then the increased enjoyment and improved literacy habits. These are the six metrics. Now, while not all schools have graduation rates, we know that graduation rates start from preschool. And so we have graduation rates, post-secondary enrollment rates, academic assessments, attendance rates, feedback from students and parents, and a number of resources provided. And these are all the ways that we're continuing to measure the overall impact, impact. Probably my, probably this is the most exciting slide, is just measuring the pipeline performance. And how can we track this throughout the pipeline is really looking at the attendance, academic data, and behavior. And I know at all of these schools listed, there has been an increase or decrease, depending on the metric, of those three categories. In this way, we all can track as we move along through the different schools in the pipeline, and just the unique factor of seeing a student from preschool all the way through when they graduate from Highland Park. Advisors Excel and all these components do fit within the Topeka Public School strategic plan of 2022, 2026. When you really look at student success, student well-being, family and community engagement, and comprehensive support services, all of those indicators align with our TPS strategic So thank you, and for the Advisors Excel, we'd like to recognize Tracy, who is here in the audience.
Can you stand for just a moment, Ms. Killo? This will be the first full year that we have this level of return on investment opportunity. With what Mr. Robbins, Ms. Killo, and the principals have done, we'll be able to track cohorts over time. So we'll be able to, from moving forward, see how the cohorts are doing over time, intervene early, and the, so far, early results have been pretty remarkable, from culture to graduation rates, to decreased behavior issues and improved attendance, chronic absenteeism thus far, and we're still early into the year. So this model, this will be the first full entire year, so we're excited about that. As we go to the City of Topeka Partnership, and I'll speak to this briefly, and then turn it over to Ms. Watson at Highland Park. The City of Topeka Partnership is continuing at T-Calc. What happened this past year, however, it almost didn't continue in the sense that it had before, where the city has been giving us a police officer in, to teach students and to really build relationships. Mrs. Nichols sent us the photo that we have there of the current officer that's currently teaching. That law enforcement pathway is really an important piece. And so previously, we had a contract at the beginning of the year, as they need their resources as well, that contract was being considered to not continue. And through the consultant services for business partnerships, a meeting with the city council, Mr. Robbins did secure that continued contract, so they did hire a new person, placed that individual in the classroom. We have 38 students, so students across the district participate. Highland Park students are in this as well. The neat new thing that they're doing this year, they expanded the partnership with having, according to Ms. Nichols, sex trafficking, human trafficking crimes are being talked about, they have speakers, she said, pretty much every month, if not every week. And so the number of people in the law enforcement pathway, but outside of just being a police officer, or not just being, but being a police officer, which is certainly one of the roles, but there's also dispatch, there are attorneys, there are people that are social workers. So that has been wonderful, and we just want to thank publicly, although she's not in the space right now, Ms. Pamela Reader, Officer Pamela Reader.
She's
Is she in the
Early.
Officer Pamela Reader, we just want to thank her, and she is our current officer for the law enforcement pathway. And we also want to thank the City of Topeka for making that possible. As we go to the next slide, thank you, just in case I missed her, I appreciate you, Mr. Reiner, just in case she was in that waiting room.
There's a couple people in the waiting, in the, joined the meeting virtually.
Yes, and they may be for Williams when we get to that space. And we'll turn it over to Ms. Watson and Dr. Gardner to continue with the presentation.
Good evening. We are super blessed to be a part of this partnership and program and just all of it. I know that sometimes when you hear that people are in improvement, it's just negative, but I, I don't look at it like that. I look at it as a chance to increase what we have going on, and because of that, we have all of these resources and support, and I, I really don't know what I'd do without Mr. Robbins helping us to facilitate it all, because it's a lot. I'm not from the business world, so that's something you have to be trained in and worked with, to understand how you work with business partners and how you, you create those relationships. So it's, it's been extremely supportive. That's Thank you. Also, with the mentorship that we've had, we are, as our admin team, we are all working with Mr. Robbins, and I tell you, he challenges us. He is not going to let us work on status quo. He works with us to make sure that we're strengthening what we have, and that we're always engaging in, in all of our practices, and, as I put here, fostering an environment of self-awareness, and just making sure that we're always making ourselves better than we were yesterday. I know that just recently, he has helped with a very large problem, and that problem for us was, we are hosting the TIT this year for basketball, and as I'm sure you all know, we, we are down in our athletic department right now, so it's been difficult trying to find out how we're going to get sponsorship with that, and that has officially been taken care of. And I am, I cannot express the gratitude I have and the excitement to be able to run the TIT, because I've never done it at Highland Park myself, so this is going to be a great, great season.
You have a sponsor, because you didn't have a sponsor last week, so you now have a sponsor?
We did not have a sponsor, but we do now have a sponsor. I am, and it just happened, that's why you don't know yet.
Business partner sponsor, the Mr. Robbins, oh, you can't say
I was like, can I say who? So Lewis Toyota is going to sponsor Highland Park High School with the TIT tournament. So, thank you.
Lewis Toyota's watching, thank you, Lewis Toyota, thank you, Mr. Robbins, for reaching out to Lewis Toyota for that sponsorship. Any other items that you want to share, Mrs. Watson, about Highland Park and your mentorship services and your business partnership?
Yes, another project that I know that you all are aware of is our freshman academy. So this is our second year, and like I said, Mr. Robbins really encourages us to be bigger and better. And so we are currently in development of how we are going to do that. So every year, we want to improve it and make it even better. So And that problem for us was we are hosting the TIT this year for basketball. And as I'm sure you all know, we are down in our athletic department right now. So it's been difficult trying to find out how we're going to get sponsorship with that. And that has officially been taken care of. And I am, I cannot express the gratitude I have and the excitement to be able to run the TIT, because I've never done it at Highland Park myself. So this is going to be a great, great season.
And if You have a sponsor, because you didn't have a sponsor last week, so you now have a sponsor.
We did not have a sponsor, but we do now have a sponsor. I am, and it just happened. That's why you don't know yet.
Business partner sponsor, the Mr. Robbins, oh, you can't say.
I was like, can I say who? So Lewis Toyota is going to sponsor Highland Park High School with the TIT tournament. Thank you.
Lewis Toyota is watching. Thank you, Lewis Toyota. Thank you, Mr. Robbins, for reaching out to Lewis Toyota for that sponsorship. Any other items that you want to share, Mrs. Watson, about Highland Park and your mentorship services and your business partnership?
Yes, another project that I know that you all are aware of is our freshman academy. So this is our second year, and like I said, Mr. Robbins really encourages us to be bigger and better. And so we are currently in development of how we are going to do that. So every year, we want to improve it and make it even better. So with Ms. Banka Koya and Mr. Robbins, and just recently Tracy Kilo, we've all been discussing what that will look like and how we are going to support our students, not just that when they get there, but even before. So we're looking into the summer before, we're looking into after they transition into the 10th grade. What is that going to look like to ensure that that success continues? And I think I've said this before with some of you, but our freshman academy has extremely supported our students in a sense that they used to be the most struggling students, where they had the highest amount of students that weren't going to class because they would skip and they would just, they'd be doing everything they shouldn't be. But last year, our, all of our stats showed that they were number one with their attendance. They were number one with their grades, they were number one with their behavior. And as the senior person, that's disheartening, but exciting also. So I could go on forever on the amount of things that we're working on right now.
Ms. Watson and Ms. Banka Koya, she oversees the freshman academy since she is here this evening. Ms. Banka Koya and Ms. Giardina, if there are any other comments you want to add regarding your freshman academy, since you did come this evening, thank you so much for being here, Ms. Banka Koya and and Ms. Giardina as well.
Thank you for having me. I would like to say this has been an eye-opening experience for me. This is my third year as an administrator. And thanks to Mr. Robbins, he took me under his wing when I started even my graduate studies, mentoring me as what it is to be an effective leader, not only as an African-American leader, but one who stands to know what to do, how, as he says, you manage up and you manage down. And I thank him for that opportunity. He connected me this year with Ms. Tracy, with Advisors Excel, as we worked with Ms. Watson, trying to build the freshman academy. I had ideas, but I didn't know how I would execute it or how I'll get to it. But Mr. Robbins sat me down, said, show me what you need, what you're thinking, what your goals are, why, what's your why? And I talked to him, I talked to him about the importance of transition, having our eighth graders come into ninth grade, knowing what they want to do, helping them understand from the lack of the, they have this freedom, but what does this freedom look like? And the importance of knowing what you really need in your grades to be a true sophomore. And the ideas of having structures in place for them, for them to be able to be successful in their freshman year. And Mr. Robbins sat with me, helped me bring that vision to light, and then connected us with Ms. Tracy, who then sat with us twice and kind of coached me through, okay, this is what you're looking at. What is your why? How do you look at those cohorts? How are you going to measure? And so I do owe a huge gratitude to Mr. Robbins for his leadership, for his continued mentorship and his guidance. I truly appreciate that, and I look forward and excited for the freshman academy at Highland Park High School and the great things we'll be doing.
Thank you so much, and thank you for being here this evening. Any other comments before we go to the next slide for you?
Is there a single most important thing to elevate these students to number one?
Thank you for that question. I would say a single most important thing to elevate the students to number one is the self of, is the sense of self-belonging and safeness. Our students feel safe, they feel secure in our environment, regardless of their background and where they're coming from. They know that they have a staff who love them, a staff who will be there for them to support them and provide them whatever it is they need. And that provision is done not just by what we say, what we are able to provide and what we what we do. And so that single, the one single thing would be our presence there, our consistency and our preparedness to take our students to the next level.
And that takes a lot of time to develop that trust.
This is true, and that's why it's important that we're there from day one, from the jump. We show them that we're there, we're consistent with what we do. And our students truly, as a matter of fact, I will say this real quick and I'll take a seat. I had a student, not when my students started in August, compared to where they are now, I have students coming to me telling me, Ms. Banka Koya, I can't fail. We've got about ten days, I can't fail. What do I need to do? Students are coming to the office, academy office to sit down, they get their instruction, they're sitting down, trying to get work done on the computer, trying to get things done. They feel that safeness. They feel that they're loved, and they know that we want the best for them. So yes, that's the one single thing, and it's pushing them forward.
How can we replicate you?
Thank you, Ms. Banka Koya.
And Dr. Baumbrake, I think this is, you had a great comment as a segue. Replication is done through Minority Leadership Academy as Ms. Banka Koya, Ms. Giardina, Ms. Watson have all been a part of Minority Leadership Academy. And in my MLA, it just holds a special place in my heart, because I remember when I got hired in TPS in 2013, one of the first group of people I met with was Mr. Robbins and Marie Carter. And they said, you're going to be on Minority Leadership Academy, and it's been one of the best things that's happened to me in this district. And I owe them a sense of gratitude for that. Just some of the things that MLA, since we've come back after COVID, we've got to attend an Equity Summit, and that was through the partnership with Evergy, the Greater Topeka Partnership. And then we've recently, just this last month, we actually took a tour of the Wolf Creek facility, which that's not something that the average person gets to go, which is the level of security and background checks. And you would wonder what could, you know, school leaders take away from a nuclear power plant? And just the level of detail to everything they do there. And then the opportunities Ms. Cool, who are introduced in a second, has provided theirs to meet with their top leadership members. I believe it was eight or ten of their top leadership members took time just to have lunch and have conversations with us. And those type of conversations are something that are truly impactful. And the biggest takeaway just from that one that I took away is just communication. They mentioned when there's an error or something wrong, it has to do with communication. So when I go back to our school or our sites, we look at how can we shore up those communication aspects? And then for our own personal growth, we've been able to take trainings with Clifton Strength Finders, emotional intelligence, and then crucial conversations, all which, you know, add to our own leadership, our own capabilities in our own schools. At this time, I would like to have Ms. Angela Cool, Senior Director, Total Reward and Business Partners from Evergy, come say a few remarks.
Thanks.
And thank you for your investment.
So I've been at Evergy for twenty-seven years, and I know we've had a partnership, had a partnership years back. And it was probably two or three years ago that I got a call from Mr. Robbins. And it was, how can we free up this partnership between both of our companies in regards to professional development? And Mr. Robbins is not somebody you can turn down. So what I appreciate about him, first off, before this partnership, is that he has a business background. Evergy is a company of about forty-seven hundred employees, about fifty percent of those are union employees. We're in Kansas and Missouri, so we know that the pipeline for education, the pipeline for the workforce is here. Also, half of our population are union workers. Mr. Robbins, having that background, having a business background, really related to us, not only from, and from our union perspective, leading union folks, knowing union contracts, doing union negotiations, having that background and being able to educate that and build that next pipeline of folks is really important to us. So we appreciate the partnership, being able to, we're better at our company educating adults. So that's what we're doing with this group so far. But I will tell you, after the excitement, Dr. Gardner talked about the Wolf Creek Tour. While they may think it's, you know, pretty difficult to get in there, it is. But the excitement after that day of your team coming with the executive leadership there, I had our chief nuclear officer said, Angela, I want an appointment at TCal. So that's, that's coming. But, you know, trying to, his, his goal is to, is to really build an energy pathway. We are, we are building so much infrastructure, we, we, we will need, you know, our next generation of workers. So, so I think a lot more to come there, and I appreciate Mr. Robbins really reintroducing us together, and we love this partnership, so.
Thank you again.
Yep.
I just wanted to speak on behalf of Minority Leadership. Twenty-ten, I got a call to say that I was going to be in Minority Leadership Academy. We didn't know what that was. What does this mean? There were eight of us, I think I'm the last one standing, but they've gone on to bigger and better things. But at that time, I was a fourth grade teacher, and I was happy. I was in my place, and I was going to stay there. They were going to bury me in the courtyard at Scott Magnet, and I was going to leave that teacher that had been there for forty years. And then I met Mr. Robbins, and he said, what else you gonna do? I said, teach, and what else? And he continued to push me while I was in Minority Leadership to say, and what else? I'm like, I'm going to reach the kids that come in my room, those are the ones that have been gifted to me. What about the rest of them? So from that, Johnny Sanders and I said, you want to get your masters together? And so we did that together, only to find out that was another question where it says, and what else are you going to do? Oh, my God, what else can I do at this point? And being an administrator was never anything that I wanted, because I wanted to be with students. And growing up, that's not what I saw. The principal was always in the office, and that's not me. And so he told me, you develop it to what you want it to be. So I watched administrators before me that worked with kids, but also worked in the office. And it, just by those questions and that inquiry that he continued to push me, to push me to a place that I didn't even know my own potential, is why I'm still in Minority Leadership Academy. I feel like it's a thing that I'm just going to have. When it went away at COVID, we were like, oh, well, I don't know, we got a call, Mr. Robbins. Four of us, you're starting it back up. All right, what does that look like? That's what you guys are going to decide. And he pushed us as leaders to do that. Now, we are pushing Minority Leadership to do the same. What's our next step? So I thank him now for that push. I didn't thank him before, but that push brought me here. It's let me work with teachers, students, parents, that I may not have had that chance. So I thank you for that, and I wanted to take the time to say that. But Minority Leadership work continue to grow. We are. We've got three pillars now: scholarship, community service, and mentorship. So we're starting to really define who it is that we are. So you'll be seeing us around. We're going to keep pushing ourselves, just like Mr. Robbins has pushed us. So thank you.
The College Prep Academy, I won't really speak much to this slide, other than the business partnerships through AE that you saw on the very first slide, is, has been built out, so that cohort model will be reviewed as well in addition to the college trips. So there's a budget slide at the very end that Mr. Robbins has met with each one of these groups and an AE for the return on investment report, but to also identify how they will spend their budget. Dr. McKnight is leading that for college prep this year in regards to where will funds go. And through that partnership, Dr. McKnight and Mr. Robbins and Ms. Tracy Kilo have developed a first route, well, it used to be called First Route, but it's a partnership that's allowing students to determine a business entrepreneur piece and, and beginning to identify things that they want with a funding source through AE. So we are grateful for that. And he's volunteering his time every month to do the continuation of mentoring the young people there each month. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Gardner.
Thank you. The budget impacts, I can just give a brief overview. If the specific schools want to share some of the impacts they feel are most impactful, I will call them up as well. At our preschool sites of Sheldon and Pine Ridge, the overall amount this year they are spending is five thousand. And all the different line items from the field trips to the child kits, to the food pantry, we all have a return on investment. So just a sense of intentionality. And then at our Ross and Eisenhower site, at Ross, we have eleven thousand dollars we're projected to spend this year. And then at Eisenhower, which is new, is eight thousand four hundred. And at their high school with Ms. Watson and Ms. Giardina at Highland Park, it's forty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-six dollars. So I'm not sure if Highland Park wanted to speak to anything they spend their dollars on.
I believe the budget slides are in there. I mean, you've spoken about a number of the resources. Are you all okay with it? And we'll open it up for the board for questions in that regard as well.
Board members, are there questions?
And as we turn this over to board members for questions, for other schools that are on improvement, if they have a consultant that is serving them and that we're utilizing, much like we have our lobbyists come, we want to know, what are they doing with, you know, what, what are the activities? What are they doing in that space? We do have some consultants working with culture and climate at some of our schools as well currently. So you can expect for that in the January report, in addition to having pastor sublet come for community partnerships.
Mr. Tatum?
So I, I'm really just thoroughly impressed by all the information that you've shared with us, Dr. Gardner and others. So I've got two questions. In the, the visual depiction of the pipeline, you've got the schools that are indicated at different points along the pipeline. I'm looking at page two in the handout. So are there, are there cohorts? Are there mentoring cohorts at each of those schools that are depicted on the, on the pipeline?
Yes, there's, Advisors Excel provides mentoring, and actually Tracy has been a mentor at Ross as well.
Okay, okay, very cool. Is there, was there a, was there a methodology or intention in terms of where those schools were placed on the pipeline, whether they were above the pipeline or below the pipeline? I'm just, I'm trying to find out if there's anything I'm missing from the, or am I reading too much into that?
And we'll pull up that slide, so the people that are listening online can see the pipeline that you're talking about, and I think that's page two.
Page two is what I'm, I think it's also on another page as well.
And Ms. Kilo is here as well in terms of that graphic. You might be reading a little too much into whether they're above or below. It's really, for the graphic, and maybe it's
Slide four.
Slide four. And I think it's really just in terms of the graphic in that regard. But there is intentionality with schools with high mobility, high poverty in, in those areas. So some of our partnerships started, but it wasn't to this level of a pipeline, a cohort, a return on investment report with academic data outcomes. That's new, under the consultant agreement. But we have had a longstanding partnership with looking at how can they mentor and invest in some way. Highland Park, Ross, and Sheldon. Eisenhower is new this year, and we're excited about that addition. But the above or below line, I don't believe that there is a method behind that, unless Ms. Kilo, is there anything you want to add to that? That's just a graphic, correct?
Just not good at graphic design.
That's okay. I wanted to make sure that I was understanding it and I wasn't missing any pieces of the puzzle that were important for me to grasp. So thank you for that. My, my other question, I am, as someone who, who has a professional background of, of, of leading with leadership development and mentoring among minorities, this Minority Leadership Academy, it sounds like it is just doing some, some amazing things. And I love the, the personality inventories that have been included in, in, in the work that is done in the mentoring, the minority leadership. in, in, in the work that is done in the mentoring, the Minority Leadership Academy. It, it, it sounds like there may be several people that are leading this group. And so I was curious as, as to who, who, who are the, the leaders of the Minority Leadership Academy?
Thank you for that acknowledgement, Mr. Tatum. And I'll acknowledge those. I'm the president of Minority Leadership. Ms. Jardina is the vice president. Ms. Johnny Sanders is the secretary. And then Ms. Hop, we're at Jardine, is the treasurer.
Awesome, very cool. We'll keep up the good work on that. I'd love to hear a lot more about what this group is doing. Fires in all cylinders with all of my professional and personal interests. So I'm really, really glad. And for some reason, I, I, I don't know that I was really keenly aware that this effort was going on. But I'm, I'm definitely glad to know about it now and will be watching for it with great interest. So thank you.
And Mr. Tatum, one thing to add, we do give a scholarship each year to a TPS student who is interested in education. And last year, it was Giovanni Shore from Highland Park. And it was a five hundred dollar scholarship.
Fantastic, okay, thank you.
Mr. Tatum, previously, Ms. Marie Carter was the vice president. Mr. Robbins was the president. As he was retiring, he turned the reins over to the team and, and had them identify. So that's what she was saying, that you all have to take this and move this forward.
Okay, that, that does sound familiar to me. Yeah, I guess I, I wasn't realizing it was the same body-
So it's now driven by them.
Moved on with new leadership, okay.
They're doing the recruiting and all of those pieces. And then the professional development isn't costing our team anything. The Strength Finders, all of those items, as it's done through the consultant, all of those things are being handled by the philanthropic support. The ones in the room and the ones that aren't in the room. So we thank them for that.
Fantastic. Well, for Strength Finders, my top two strengths are maximizer and futurist. So I am absolutely interested in seeing how this group can maximize its efforts for the future. Thank you.
Ms. Bowley?
I'm really excited about the data collection piece that's coming, that has been put in place. I know Advisors Excel and some of our other partners are so generous with your funds. I don't even know how to thank you and the lives that you're changing in our district. But that we're collecting data on, what does it really mean that we support this district? Are we really changing lives? I know in my heart you are, but I'm really excited about seeing the data and the impact and in the pipeline. So students that start in these schools that are in place, usually for our lower income families that don't always have the same opportunities, you're donating the money to help build that strength and to see that all the way down to the end of high school, I think is gonna be really powerful. So I'm really excited about the pieces that you're putting in place to track that, give us data and, and see what's really working. Where do we really need to put that money? Where do we really need to put that focus? So I thank you for the hard work you're going to be putting in on that. Because some of it's going to be harder to collect data on. So I'm really excited to see this. So thank you all for getting that in place. Mr. Robbins, you sound like a superhero. Where's your cape? Hey, hey, I got to be Graham Marshall and I have a cape. I have a cape that I should have brought tonight. That would have been like perfect. I'll make sure you get that cape.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Dr. Bonebrake?
How are the mentorships applied? Is it individual? Do teachers tell a group or the individual? This person needs some help, some direction? How is it done? And the teachers just point students out or they don't have time?
How are you picking mentors at your building and setting this piece up?
Great question, Dr. Bonebrake. And we really look at a lot of different factors. We look at our SRSS data for the students who are really maybe like internalizers who could need a mentor. And then we also take feedback from our mental health team to try to pair the mentors up. And Advisors Excel does a great job. They kind of send you a profile, I would say, of the mentor. And then you can really try to find a student who aligns with, with them. And the impacts are really significant.
Can we find another school for you to be principal of?
Dr. Bonebrake, and I would just say, kind of leading to that, taking, being a principal at two schools and having Mr. Robbins especially there for me this year has been instrumental to the success we're having. And then my continued growth of continuing to raise the standard. So thank you, Mr. Robbins.
As that presentation has concluded, Ms. Robbins, I know that you're here. Were there any comments you wanted to say, sir? I think the principals have, as they presented, was there anything? I didn't want to overlook you. Thank you for the consulting work that you're doing. With that piece of school improvement work that's going on, we also have Williams Online. This has to be one of the largest parent gatherings that we've had. They are school on improvement. So they have data consults as well as part of that. And I believe Mrs. Ritter, is Ms. Ritter and Team Online? If you can bring them on the screen. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Ritter to talk about something unique that they've done this year, focused really on community engagement, parent engagement and community partnerships.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. We have worked very hard over the years to strengthen our, our engagement with our families and the connections amongst our families and our staff. We always want to pour into our families and do the best we can to support them. And this particular family engagement, I was the perfect opportunity to engage with our families because they have been coming out. When we have our events, they come, they have a great time. And this was a perfect opportunity to engage with them and connect them with those community resources in our community. Because there's, there's a big need right now and our school feels it, we see it. And so we just wanted to make sure that we were filling a lot of needs when, when they came that evening. And I really like, I want Mrs. Charity to be able to receive the accolades because every single community resource that showed up that evening was from her phone calls, walking downtown Topeka, recruiting people and just boots on the ground. And so she deserves a whole lot of credit for making, making this night happen.
Ms. Charity, can you share a little bit for the board members that, you know, weren't, may not know all the context around this event? How many partners, how many people showed up? And, and what your title is? When we think of improvement, what title are we able to provide Williams with through you?
Well, I am a third grade classroom teacher and I am also the Title One Family Engagement Coordinator. This is year number three for me. And just a little bit of context on this. My very first social emotional family engagement night, first event when I was in charge, I was so excited, poured my heart into it, and we had three families show up. And that was it. And we had over two hundred people in our building, families in our building for this social emotional event. As the needs are great right now, just society wide. And if we can kind of help families, you know, it, it takes a village. And so, you know, if kids are fed and have what they need at home, if families are supported, then they are going to come to school better able to engage and, you know, better able to learn. And I think some of the work that we've put in thus far on that goal, I think that has shown also in our building's data and the growth that we've seen from our students. There have been some really exciting things. But just as I was planning this event and a lot of the things that are happening, I wasn't necessarily completely aware of the resources that were out there. And so thinking, how can we support families, whether it is for adult education or ways, pathways for, you know, parents and adults? So we wound up with, there were over thirty community organizations represented. We had Topeka Metro was there to kind of provide information about transportation, which is necessary for employment and many things. And many of our families do not have vehicles or transportation. Many community organizations, lots of different food pantries. We had West Side Baptist Church Baby Closet, West Side Christian Church Kids Closet that maybe families aren't aware of, that that's a valuable community resource. So that was really exciting, the response from the community. I think it was very well received. And also, we had donations where we were able to put together family meal kits. So every family left with a meal kit that was budget friendly. And there was a QR code. There were many different kits that were put together. And so they took one, but they were able to scan. And then they had information on budget friendly meals as well as, you know, how family meals help and the benefit of that. So it was, it was a really exciting event. And I'm hoping this was year one, but I'm hoping that this is something that we can continue in the future.
And with that, Mrs. Wallace, do you want to add to that event? Ms. Charity, you are being given an Above and Beyond Award. And that will be given to you tomorrow. Thank you. And while we know through the grant, you are identified to receive the, to help with the services that you're helping with, you've gone far above and beyond we've seen in any of our schools with the amount of just transformation that we're seeing this year under the leadership, the steady leadership of Ms. Ritter. So congratulations to you both. And Ms. Wallace, do you want to speak to this?
Yes. So I would just say, family engagement has, is difficult in any community. It has been especially difficult in our socioeconomic status of our district to get families engaged. They didn't necessarily have a positive experience in school themselves. So coming to school is something that they're not just excited to do. Ms. Charity has grown this incredibly. And she's actually going to present on January fifth to the rest of our family engagement liaisons on how to get families out and in your school and how to build capacity in our parents.
And how many people, Ms. Wallace, and how many community partners approximately?
Oh, she had over twenty-five to thirty partners. The fire department was there. They were telling families how they can get smoke detectors installed for free. They had a room devoted to Character Strong, which is our SEL curriculum, and kids doing activities.
There's one parent that told me she was doing yoga.
Yes, there was.
Yoga?
There was, there were lots of little yoga stations and activities that were going on so kids could learn how to regulate themselves. It was, there was something there for, for parents, there was something there for kids. They partnered with churches and fed the families that came onsite along with the kits that they brought in. It was really amazing.
Approximately over two hundred families showed up. So you know the impact and the transformation with just that family night and what we're announcing at Williams. Two hundred families in one night is, at any school, is pretty remarkable as their new norm. So again, congratulations and we thank you both.
Thank you. And I just want to thank, Mr. Menyose was also there. He had a table for El Centro. So I appreciated that very much also. You know, just lots of resources for families. So thank you.
That does conclude our report from schools, improvement schools.
All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion item, twenty point one, high school course changes.
So yes, you have the list of course changes for this year. And I would just share that most of these are related to changes in CTE courses. There are a few that are on here as changes. We want to be able to offer diversity theater and historical inquiry multiple times for credit. Kansas History Day, project-based learning for that historical inquiry. And then there are a couple of changes that are just required for the state. One is that we need to split health and physical education into two one semester courses. And that's part of the new graduation requirements. And then personal finance needs to be, you know, it's a graduation requirement. And while we have offered it for many years as a requirement in Topeka Public Schools, we've also allowed other courses that aren't really specific to personal finance to count. And those don't actually count for personal finance. And so those are some of the basic changes. And then you'll see we're removing world geography and African geography, but they are being replaced with geography of the Americas and Europe and geography of Africa, Asia, and Oceania.
And Ms. Nichols is here as well to help address any questions regarding course changes as she's heavily involved in this with Mrs. Wallace. And I didn't realize she was here earlier when we were doing the PowerPoint. My apologies for that. We talked about TCALC and the pathway.
The technical theater, theater design and construction, does that have anything to do with Little Theater at Topeka High?
And that's a title change to that course. That is not specific to the Little Theater. That's a course they offer in multiple high schools.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Wallace?
Or Mrs. Nichols?
Or Mrs. Nichols.
I will point out that there's aviation maintenance as a possible new.
Which could be big with the development they're trying to do out at Forbes and working at Billard.
And Ms. Nichols has, has piloted it with students actually this year. So we are excited about what she's put in place.
Could you come speak to that? Sorry, but you're here.
Your voice matters. You're in the room, so. And she's our twenty under forty. That's my leader.
But thank you for those of you guys that went to the dinner the other night. So we have two students doing private pilot ground school right now as an independent study. That course is on the list to adopt next year. Been working with Mr. Minkie to get an instructor in the building to teach that and then a flight simulator that would help them log their hours to prepare for their exam. So we're still exploring the maintenance piece. There's some legislative dollars allocated to provide equipment and training. So again, the staffing and then, I'm running out of room at TCALC. So we've got to figure that out too. But yeah, there's some exciting things happening in Topeka that we really want to be supportive of.
Yeah, not to mention at the twenty under forty, they talked about an aviation program during that presentation.
I'm going there next Saturday to visit with them, yeah.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you for you guys' work on this. All right, the next item on the agenda is item number twenty-two, board member comments. We'll start with Dr. Bonebrake.
We were probably all principals for a day. And I was at Lowman Hill and there's been a significant transformation. When I was there last year, a child threw a chair against a wall and everybody was just tight. And this year, I mean, kids had come up and hugged teachers and principals and everybody seemed to know everybody's name. It was a very warm and inviting environment. And I suggested if there was another school that she'd take two principal jobs, like have, we already have an example, but he's no longer. Yeah. So anyway, a couple of committees met. The Health Committee. Nationwide Insurance is probably going up nine and a half percent and we only went up eight and a half percent. There's reasons for the increase. There are new medications. America is primary in developing- There are new medications. America is primary in developing new medications. COVID showed our lack of sufficient personnel. And so the personnel are principals at two schools and they're working more hours, jobs than prior. And sort of demanding more pay and they're getting more pay. And the third is new treatments are coming along all the time. Like uh, the pacemaker is now a little tiny thing, less than a centimeter, which is implanted in the heart. There's no wires or anything. Uh, just changes like that all along the line. And we're really the only country developing these advances. And how are we going to pay for it? Exactly what? I have a suggest that's get rid of the pharmaceutical management professionals or PBMs, get rid of PBMs. They just act as middlemen between the pharmaceutical companies and the pharmacies. And billions of dollars are spent there. If we could somehow bypass them. But to go to pricing the way Europeans have, we're going to kill innovation. We're gonna stop, we, we are the primary producer of new medication and treatment. That will basically come to a screeching halt. Single pair system, just rations care. Uh, let's see. Oh, the uh, Finance Committee also met. And as of November one, we were losing funding for Head Start and our uh, School Lunch Program. I, as, I don't suppose we've heard any word of resumption?
Mrs. Sharp, now that the government has opened up, what's the update on Head Start?
We are wait, whoa, sorry. We are anxiously awaiting our award notice. We are anticipating that. We're anticipating full funding. Um, but we are still waiting.
But like aviation uh, Con Tower people, if you take a day vacation, do you lose it? Lose all the, no. Yeah. Uh, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Um, let's see. I was out for surgery, so I missed um, Equity Council um, activities. So I'll let hopefully Mr. Munoz report on that. I had the privilege of joining Highland Park High School for Principal for a Day. Um, I always love visiting Highland Park High School. I, I genuinely really enjoy it there and wish that I had said something when um, our administrators from Highland Park were here. I just want to note, um, there's just a really special warmth there that I think they in particular have curated. And um, those three women have very different personalities, but um, what they have in common is just a really genuine care for their students. What? Ms. Watson's fourth year or something like that. Yeah. Um, I just, I find it very moving to watch them with our kids and how our kids engage them. It's not just these administrators, um, you know, going to kids, but there was a point in the freshman academy that we were just standing in the hall during passing and kids, several kids were so eager to come up to uh, Mrs. Banco Koya or Ms. Watson and share their excitement about being caught up on their work and, and different things like that, that um, it's just really something to notice and that, that smaller community feel um, and very personal environment. Um, I really appreciate and respect and um, wish I had said that when they were still here, but something similar I have seen in Eisenhower and Ross. Um, a real emphasis on making the environment personal to our kids. And um, I just think that goes a really, really long way. Um, they spoke to the freshman academy and I visited a couple of times. And um, it just runs very smoothly. And I know it's an incremental transition where they'll sort of add to it each year, but um, that's the hallway we were in when those students, you know, kept coming to their administrators with pride and, and know them well. And they know that their principals know them well. Um, and I also just want to note that the, the representation of leaders in those schools is so important too. Um, and so glad that the Minority Leadership Academy grows that representation. Um, I think those are my main comments since I've been out, but um, I do want to note the, the portion, my favorite portion of that day for Principal for a Day was, was being able to speak with students themselves. And it was a very diverse group of kids in terms of interests and activities. And they just spoke very, um, I think candidly and vulnerably about their high school experiences, both what they love and what they'd like to see improved. And um, it's not every day that we get to talk to kids themselves. So very valuable and I appreciate that opportunity.
Um, we had Personnel Committee today. And we hired a fourth grade teacher in a class. So that long-term sub won't be in place. We'll have a new teacher in that classroom. So that's very exciting. They're working really hard on finding people to um, hire in our district. And it is not easy right now. And some of the things that we have opened that I want to throw out there to anybody that may be listening. If you're thinking about being an educator, we will promise you a job in mathematics and science. We need you. We want you. We know you can do it. So please go to college and get those uh, specialties for us. We would love it. No. But we'll pay their wages. And their insurance, right? Um, our team is working really hard to get them um, as many as we can get hired, but we are working very hard against other districts and uh, we um, need to have grace with them and, and just encourage them to do their work. And our Tech Committee, um, the Intercom Modernization Project is getting ready to really gear up. They're checking all of our systems. They'll be working on that uh, in, over Thanksgiving for one building. Am I correct? Mr. Reiner, for the modernization will be in one building to start with, correct? Yes. Uh, getting the equipment has been a challenge, but we are ready to go over Thanksgiving break to uh, get that started. Um, the board docs that you were just waiting to get is on hold. So you'll have to wait a little bit longer. You're gonna have to continue to use this system. I know your hearts are broken, but it'll be all right. No, we have one down there that the heart is really broken. Um, uh, for, we have found out, uh, Mr. Minkie has informed us that we really do need to have water sensors in our buildings to keep our insurance down. And so we will be working on getting in uh, water sensors in buildings. So we don't lose a gym floor again. We don't flood rooms, uh, basements with boilers, whatever. We were, we're working on getting those done. Another thing I, when I went to uh, the Kansas Association of School Boards Conference this weekend, last weekend, um, they talked about the really fast progression of AI. And so really had the discussion about us trying to get in front of that instead of behind it in policies. And um, I know we got a policy lady on our committee that loves that kind of stuff. And so just looking at that AI and what it really means to us, I think we're gonna have to do some really good research on it. Some of it, we're not going to be able to see. We don't even totally understand what it's going to do and change in education. So um, but let's try to get ahead as much as we can on it. Uh, I think it's gonna be really fast-moving and come at us like a train. I went to a DCAC meeting and their presentation was on Down Syndrome Awareness. And I'm wearing one of the buttons that they have. And one of the things they pointed out is that we seem to have a special presentation or day for, for almost every other thing, but we don't recognize the support for Down Syndrome. And that I believe it's March twenty-first, but I can find out for sure what that particular day is that maybe we can do something around that, supporting that um, and invite them to our board and uh, allow them to give a little presentation on the, the importance of the awareness and, and what work we're doing with our students in our district, uh, which was also presented. Sheldon, you asked about Sheldon and they are working and doing everything they can to support needs even without our grant at this moment. Nothing has changed. Everything is working the same. They are supplying everything our students need. And um, we're just, like we said, we're just waiting with bated breath to hear something soon. Capers is adopting some families there, and so that's really exciting. Uh, Mr. Mike always comes with wrapped toys for the students and he'll be coming soon. They have a, a remarkable parents newsletter. I wish I'd known Mrs. Charity was looking for things because their newsletter is just so full of resources for parents. And they just keep adding on and uh, allows the parents to know where can I reach out for this? We have a great partnership with Grace Med and they did ninety-four dental appointments. Um, parents have to give approval for that. They have to sign up for that. So ninety-four parents did do that, or ninety-four children attended. Could be less parents probably. And uh, twenty-three had to have further references that were taken care of by the school. Um, they had a ninety-two percent parent conference rate. So parents really taking an interest in coming in. One of the things I asked is how many uh, students do we have returned to, from our three-year-old program to our four-year-old program? And wanting to know if we can maybe strengthen that. It was fifty-eight percent. But I just think for our students, it would be just really powerful if we could get that, you know, in the next few years, even in the sixties or seventy percent to have that continuous education for our kids. I think it would really show in the scores, which they're taking the assessments now. So um, they're really excited about that to see how they're doing. I attended the Native American Summit. Um, and one of the things I learned that was very interesting to me is they were wanting their students to learn their language. They know that not knowing their language or never hearing their language is important to their connection to their tribes. And one of the challenges that they have is there is not an alphabet for writing the Native American language. And it's in basically a code. And so they have a, people that are trying to work on creating codes so they can even give the instruction in their own native language. And so they really need uh, anthropologists. We, they were encouraging our students to become anthropologists to help with this project. Uh, they can't pass down the stories or understand their stories if they don't understand or know their language. And so just a question, how many people have had ever eaten squirrel? Anybody re, uh, eaten rabbit?
Okay, a few people. Nobody would own up to squirrel.
And, and, and uh, opossum. How many people have eaten opossum? That one I might not own up to. Dr. Kip? Dr. Gray? They were talking about the, the cuisine, you know, the, these are things that they're hunters and gatherers and um, they were asking the students, how many of you have experienced these uh, traditional dishes? So it was a doctor, hey, uh, Yale is just amazing. Um, tomorrow I get to meet, not really. Tomorrow I get a photo with uh, KSB and Governor Kelly. They basically line you up, you walk in, you stand behind her, she says hi, then they parade you back out. But I'm going to be in Dr. Kel, or um, Governor Kelly's office tomorrow as, as a photo shoot. So if I can say anything about public education, it will come out of my mouth. Uh, Mr. Robbins invited me to T-Calc for the apparel contest. Um, which was, the students there are, are just so ame, amazing. And they introduce themselves. They tell me what their goals are. They wanted to know what my position was, why I, I wanted to be part of Topeka Public Schools as a board member. And we just had a great discussion before we chose um, our partners, they're partners now. Uh, eighth grader assisting a seventh grader and mentoring them. And so they, they win as partners and that was really great. Principal of the day, I was so fortunate to be at Topeka High with um, Representative Schlingen Siepen and uh, Wagle and Simmons. And we just really had a great discussion sitting around the table, talking about how we need them to speak up whenever there is any discussion around disparaging disparaging words around public education. And that we just need to change that narrative. They might not be able to pull, push through things that we really need. But when they take, say, public schools are failing, we need voices there to say, no, I have the data to show you. They are not failing. Um, at the conference, we had great data, which I'd like to share with somebody that we can bring here and maybe uh, a, a few of the people that went to conference can share what Dr. Watson shared with us. And, and the data is just getting so much better in Kansas. We should be very proud and our staff should be very proud. Our district should be very proud. Um, I was at Harvesters this week and food scarcity is real. Our pantries are getting low. If, if there's people out there that can provide anything for our pantries or for Harvesters, please do. Um, there were over four hundred cars there and every car could pick up for two families. So um, it is real. And while we're thinking of that food scarcity, I hope that you're very, very thankful at your Thanksgiving dinner. And I hope um, you are very blessed and being able to spend time with your family. Enjoy your time off and come back refreshed. Staff is going to be an amazing run too, the holidays. Thank you. Ooh, I forgot to say Kohl's.
Okay. You forgot what?
Kohl's. Kohl's. We were out at Kohl's for shopping with a, uh, advisors Excel. Talk about finding joy in the holidays. That, they had, you know, their staff comes out and helps the students shop. They match them with the, the students and they go around and they start shopping. And about the first five or ten minutes, the kids are very reluctant. But after that, they're pulling everything off the rack that they can find. The mentors are going, no, no, let's get the right size. But it was just so joyful to watch and it was uh, I was able to talk with Mr. Foster and tell him thank you and, and what the blessings he's giving to our students. But if you ever get a chance to uh, uh, visit Kohl's during those shopping, woo! It just lifts your heart. I'm so sorry to get into your part.
That's okay. I, I uh, I appreciate hearing about that. Um, so I've, I've had a pretty busy past. so I've, I've had a pretty busy past couple of weeks also. Um, I did not participate for the first time in several years. I didn't do principal for a day. That's because my weeks are so jam-packed. I'm learning to say no a lot more. Uh, because it just preserves peace of mind and, and cuts down on a lot of things. So, um, yeah, thank you. I, I, one of the things that I did not say no to however, was the uh, K A S B conference. Uh, I really enjoy going to that conference annually and uh, as Mrs. Bowley was alluding to, there were several of us who went to um, that conference last weekend and I, I learned a lot. There was a lot of great information. Couldn't wait to uh, come back and share it with you all. Um, first of all, I went to a session called Modernizing School District Operations. Mr. Mignoz was also there with me. Um, but uh, there is a system that I believe it's one of the, one of the Wyandotte County School Districts. KCK, okay, that's what I thought. KCK, um, their superintendent was there, uh, Dr. Stubblefield, and she was talking about their district's experience with a program called Onflow. Used to be called Let's Talk, but it's, it's essentially a platform that um, people in the community, when they want to contact someone in, in the school district or specific school or something, they've got a question, you know, there, there's a problem. They can access this online platform. It is AI, um, but there's a chatbot feature that allows them to ask questions and the chatbot, chatbot will try to answer the, the, the questions for them. But if it can't solve the problem, it routes that information to the appropriate person in the district who keeps track of answering those kinds of, of, of questions or solving those kinds of problems. And you can track the, the, how, how long it's been since the, the apply arrived before somebody has responded to that, that person. So it she, she really shared that it's been pretty, pretty revolutionary for their um, school district. And apparently th- there, there can be a separate dashboard for the Board of Education as well. Um, it, the, the chatbot is programmed. Okay. Um, this, this particular uh, system is designed with fourteen different language capabilities. Um, so it, it, it's really very interesting. Um, I'm going to talk with so, so the, the person who was co-presenting from the company who does Onflow, um, reached out to me after uh, the, the session. I don't know if they reached out to you too, Mr. Mignoz. Um, but uh, wants to set up something with me in which um, we can talk a little bit more about what this would look like. Um, I'm, my curiosity's piqued. I'd like to, to know more information. Um, I'm, I, if, if anybody else from the board is interested in sitting in on this, let me know or anyone else from the district. Um, I, it's just, it's just informational. Trying to find out a little bit more about um, this program and uh, how it might benefit us. I know that i- in several different, and I know Mrs. Bowley and I have already talked about this. But it, there, there's been several different venues that a number of us have been at recently in which people in the community were saying, w- we're having a hard time getting in touch with uh, board members and administrators. How do we do that? Um, I, I, I think we do a pretty good job of that. But it could, are there areas in which we could, we could improve and, and take a look at some things differently? Sure. And that's, that's really kind of the vein of, of what I would like to um, uh, hear from sitting in with this particular person. So I, I will, I will keep everybody posted on uh, how that works out. Um, I went to a twenty twenty-six legislative preview hosted by Leah Flyter and Shannon Kimball from K A S B. They're the legislative team. And they, they just outlined the legislative priorities, some of which we already know. We've already been made aware of, but this, this kind of drilled down a little deeper and went more in depth. Anything from uh, they, they talked about uh, bills coming up in, in the Kansas legislature that could have to do with uh, private vouchers and um, public school funding and recruitment and retention, things that, that may come up. Um, bills that, that may impact local control and the capacity for school districts to be able to solve their own issues and, and hire their own outside attorneys and things like that. Um, miscellaneous school district issues. Um, for example, um, teachers being made to follow specific curricula. That is something that, that they warned about that could come up. Allowing parents um, specifically to uh, object to any particular educational issues that they don't like. Um, that, that, that's really the school board's function. Um, so these were, these are things that they, they said be aware of. Uh, and, and the uh, school finance for- formula. There's a task force that's been meeting monthly because the school finance funding formula, that, that legislation is about to sunset. So there's an effort underway to look at a new uh, funding formula and that's something to keep an eye on as we move forward here. So I thought that was very enlightening, very engaging. And uh, I, I really appreciated the uh, depth of information that I gained. Um, Mrs. Bowley talked about uh, Commissioner Watson and some of the things that he talked about. I, I took, I think she and I both took screenshots of uh, of his slides. Um, and, and I won't, I won't go into a lot of detail other than to say that we're doing really, really good across the state. And we know we're doing good in this district in terms of high school graduation rates. But he said where we are starting to lose kids is now, it used to be the, 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 what they call the school to prison pipeline began in the third grade. If a, a third grader didn't do well on reading and math scores, then they would um, uh, start to go down a slide. Um, in which it would be hard to kind of pull out of a nosedive and graduate in, in the twelfth grade. Um, it used to be third grade, now it's second grade. Now, now they're seeing this. Doesn't mean in our particular district um, that, that we're seeing this, but it's something for us to keep an eye on. Uh, because Dr. Watson said thi- this is the problem that they are seeing um, at the state level. K S D E is seeing problems starting to arise with uh, second graders. So we, we've got to make sure that we're that we're not losing our, our, our second graders in that regard. Um, lastly, the um, there's another really in- incredible session um, called Better Board of Education Communication. And they really kind of talked about um, how the relationships that, that board members form go into um, what they called a trust bucket. And there's different um, constituents and members of the community that have their own separate trust buckets. Um, we have employees of the district, we have families uh, of students. We've got other people in the community, um, community partners, neighbors, uh, people like that. And our ability to leverage these uh, uh, individuals as resources depends in, in a crisis, depends on how much we have put into their trust buckets as we go forward. Um, because when a crisis, when a crisis happens, um, there's rumors, there's gossip. There, there's other situations that are gonna quickly spiral things out of control. And uh, how well you have cultivated relationships with those groups by filling up their trust buckets has a lot to do with how you come through that particular crisis. So it, it was, it was a very, very good uh, session that I learned a lot from. There was a couple of others. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go into those uh, too much. Um, other, I, I, I will say the highlight, one of the highlights. Um, I'm the, the um, voting member that, that votes for our district when it comes to um, ratifying uh, policies for K A S B and for electing um, the new presidents and um, one of the uh, city or the, the school board members from Manhattan, Ogden, USD three eight three. Kurt Herman, he was, he was elected the, the president. He's the president-elect now. There, there, there's a, a system in which the, the past president, the current president and the president-elect all kind of govern together. It's kind of, it's kind of weird, but he, he will be the president for next year. And so he's the president-elect now and uh, congratulations to him. He's a, he's a great guy. Um, Dr. Bonebrake talked about the finance committee. Um, I, I, the only thing I would add to what the finance committee did when we met recently was, yes, there, there are some challenges ahead. There's also some opportunities. Um, and that will materialize a little bit more as we, as we go forward. So there'll be more to come um, for all of you on, on what that looks like. I think that's it for me. I'm done. Thank you.
All right. I did cut some stuff out and for sake, for the sake of brevity. Um, principal for a day. I met over at Quincy with, I thought the vice principal, but it turned out to be Ms. Crowe, who was out on maternity leave, was back in her second day. So obviously there's a lot for her to take in and to be a gracious host was very kind of her. Um, we talked about a lot of things. I was able to talk with students as well as, and teachers. There are a few things I want to touch base with uh, Dr. Anderson regarding facilities at Quincy. So I'd like to follow up with uh, regarding that. But overall, um, Quincy is a school that um, does a lot of great work, who has amazing staff uh, that works with students and, and those particular uh, needs that the students have. So I'm, I really enjoyed my visit there. Um, I am wearing my purple tie because recently I was at Williams for their Ruby Bridges uh, Walk to School Day, um, which is something that's beginning to take off in some of our schools. So I encourage you in the next year um, to visit some of our schools who held those celebrations. I think this year it was Williams as well as Meadows. So consider uh, visiting and, and making sure that our students learn about who Ruby Bridges is and why she holds a special place and important place in the history of our country. Um, I also visited recently with Loman Hill uh, there. Um, it had been a while since I'd been there. So I'd visited recently with uh, the uh, Ms. Norton and, and met some amazing staff there. And, and a lot of good work that's being done. As was referenced earlier, Equity Council, we went to the uh, the juvenile uh, center there and met with students. And we know we had some one-on-one sessions with students who were there. And given their situation, trying to sort of understand what their experience was like. And what I left away with that experience was this, the, was a little bit hopeful because the students still had ideas and still had hope for what their future might look like. Despite their circumstances, despite, you know, we all, we all have uh, you know, mistakes in our past, but they still had hopes for things that their future could look like. And to me, I think that speaks really important for for the potential for, for them to, you know, turn things um, in, in a more positive direction. So I, I was grateful for, for that visit as well as a number of other individuals who were there. Last thing I will share as far as K A S B was decide, there's a lot of ideas, but one idea that sort of resonated with me was that every, every so often we meet and highlight seniors and for all the amazing things that we do. But somebody shared the idea that their district um, highlights elementary schools. And, and they're both important, right? We want to make sure that we uh, we graduate students and our high schools are doing a good job. And it's also equally important how our elementary school are doing and that we highlight when students and teachers and schools do amazing jobs and make progress on, on helping kids be where they need to be. So just something for us to consider. Maybe it looks like student of the month. Maybe it looks like us visiting schools and, and student, teachers who are doing amazing work with our elementary school kids. So other than that, um, I think that's all.
All right. I think everybody touched on health committee, tech committee. Um, several of us got to attend the twenty under forty gala to celebrate Laura Nichols in the district, which was a wonderful time. Uh, for principal for a day, I attended Ross and Eisenhower. Um, Dr. Gardner got me my T-shirt. Uh, and um, I've just got to give kudos to the leadership over there at those schools. They are making some tremendous strides. And there has been a lot of change in leadership at Ross over the past several years. Um, it's, it's a challenging school. We know that. Um, but he is grabbing the bull by the horns and um, making some positive changes. So I think everything we can do to continue to support them over there uh, will just benefit our students and our families. Um, on the district social media, a few weeks ago, they put out a notification for Living the Dream donations. We partnered with the Living the Dream Incorporated of Topeka and Topeka Public Schools to do an annual Living the Dream Food Drive. And we started that early. So while we have opportunities to fill our TPS community cupboard, we can also make donations um, early to the schools for the Living the Dream Food Drive. And the school that receives the most items wins the Living the Dream Traveling Trophy. So um, I'm just throwing this out there. I'm throwing all my donations at HPC, trying to help them get the trophy this year. So I've already met with Ms. Abernathy and dropped some things off. So um, I'm rooting for them. Um, but the best part of about, is about the early donations as families in need can access those donated items early as well. So if there is anyone in our school community or families that need those resources, uh, they can reach out to the school counselor or social worker. And the only other thing, item I have, and it's a little bit about awareness, is um, the district was served with a notification from the city of Topeka about the creation of a new TIF district. And um, we know that those, that's tax money that our school doesn't see. Um, they, they're doing a lot of them. And uh, part of that notification, I had brought questions up to Ms. Whitman because I received it as the county clerk. And I was wondering, how do we know that we get it as a school district? Because thirty days after that public hearing, we have the opportunity to tell the city that we feel there would be an adverse effect on our district and we can basically kind of veto it. Now, I'm sure it's just not that simple. There are probably some other things that would be in play with that. But that thirty-day time clock starts as soon as that public hearing is held, which was November twelfth. So I was just trying to get my arms around how that has historically been handled, what the board has done. Um, how we've been notified. Ms. Whitman gave a couple of different options. She said, um, Ms. Lister could send them directly to the board members. We could put a notice on um, uh, an agenda item for city-county notices on our agenda. Um, I know that for the county, that's what we do as the clerk's office receiving that. We put a notice on the agenda for the commissioners to acknowledge receipt of that, and that's their opportunity to address it. Um, she said, uh, two other options she gave were to discuss it at the finance committee meeting. Or have one or two board members meet with the city and county to discuss concerns and impact on the school district budgets when those are proposed. So I know as, as I get into this, it's kind of interesting because you see, you know, with anything, it's follow the money, right? And um, the county for a lot of our um, neighborhood improvement projects, things like N R Ps, I R Bs, we, we assess a very small fee to do that. The city has a pretty sizable fee on some of their stuff. So now it kind of makes sense to me why they, why they like to incentivize all these things. Um, but, but I don't know what that looks like. And it's something that the board kind of needs to ruminate on. Um, for this one, we don't have a lot of time, you know, with the holiday and everything coming up. Um, but I think, I think there, there would be an opportunity. I know Ms. Bowley is very passionate about it. And I think, did you say at one time you guys talked, you got together and spoke?
Uh, Mr. Robbins and myself and talked with them. You know, it is very politically tight.
It is, it is.
But I still think, and I know Mr. Robbins was on one of their
On uh, we were able to get Mr. Robbins on like one of their planning committee, planning committees. And to give, make sure that we had a And to give, make sure that we had a voice there, but I'm assuming we don't have anybody there now with Mr. Robbins gone. But I think it's something we should consider to get somebody on that again to at least have a public education voice whenever they're talking about TIFs and what that would look like and what businesses are coming in. So but it, it's a really difficult situation, but I think we really need to start getting more involved in it because there are just going to be more of them.
And we had also met with officials from, I think, the local economic development and expressed to them that we often find out at the last minute. And there was an initial statement made that they would talk to us early on when anything was coming down the pipeline. Problem is though that there's turnover with staff and I know for sure that this particular person is no longer there. So it just gets lost. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And it's, it's been the same with the county. So from a county perspective, the city is not even notifying these, sending these documents over to our office until that 30-day window has passed. So, you know, I, I think they're struggling. They've got a lot of stuff going on over there. But it does sound like it's an opportunity maybe to get, at least get a couple of board members or find somebody to put back on that committee to engage them. Because it does, it's, it's one of those things that you don't really know about it until you're impacted by it. And as sitting on the board, you know, I didn't, I didn't ever really think about them historically as a person. I'm like, oh, great, we're bringing new business in. And but we need to look at all sides of that. It does have an impact that, that a sales tax. That $900,000. Yeah. So that's $900,000 when they, when they, they're exempt from, from those sales tax for how many ever years it's determined. And sometimes that's a lot of years. And that means, that means we don't get it. And on top of that, we are already, we'll always be a tax poor city because we're the capital. So because we have so many government buildings that don't pay taxes, we're losing out on those. When they do these tips, that's money we're losing out on. And so it's just something we need to really consider to at least make sure we have a voice or decide that when we're ready that we want to take up that cross and, and sit down and say, no, we, we need to have a discussion about this because now you're affecting our students and their education. And, and, and our motto is we put students first. So.
Is there a, is there a committee that this would naturally kind of fall into the purview of?
Ms. Whitman mentioned Finance Committee. She thought that might be a good one.
Okay.
But while we discuss it in the Finance Committee, I still think we need to build some type of bridge.
Cause time is, time is running out.
Well, I think we still need to, I don't, so I'm just telling you from my day-to-day gig, I think we're going to have a lot of these coming here pretty quick. So if we can at least begin to wrap our arms around how as a board, we want to handle them, if we're going to kick it to the Finance Committee, if we're going to try and build a relationship with somebody in the city, city planning, economic development, whatever that looks like, to make sure that we have an education voice present. So as you guys come up with things, feel free to email Ms. Whitman or, or Dr. Anderson. So we can try and begin to get some strategy around this. So that's all I have. And that brings us to the end of our agenda. So I am looking for a motion to adjourn.
Madam Vice President, I move the meeting adjourned.
Second, Dr. Beeson, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. All right. It's unanimous. Meeting adjourned.